I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. The time is six o'clock. I'd like to turn the time over to Mr. Scott Moore for our invocation, followed by Mr. Dale Edman for our pledge of allegiance.
If you're so inclined, would you please stand with me? God of all people in all places at all times, we pause tonight to give you thanks that we live in a land of freedom, a place where we are free to gather together as citizens to have a voice in our own governance. We know so many around the world do not enjoy that luxury. And God, although we may not all be of one mind, we pray that we would all be of one heart, and that the hearts of these servants gathered here would be squarely and securely fixed on the good of the children of the Conroe Independent School District. We thank you for all who have given of their time and their resources and their efforts to see that our children are educated and become productive citizens. We give you thanks for those who were called into service in various ways, to volunteer, to run for elected office, to teach, to administer. And we pray that all that we would do would be to see that your will and not ours is done. God, we pray that you would send your spirit of peace amongst us tonight, that in all of our discussions and our decisions, your spirit of civility and peace would be upon us. We pray these things in all the names and by all the ways in which we know you. Amen.
Would you please pledge with me? Good to see Pastor Sheldon here this evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag? Honor.
Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Moore and Mr. Edman. Appreciate that. Item two, award and recognition. Item A, special district recognition, school board recognition month. Dr. Knoll.
All right, as we celebrate our school board recognition, certainly we want to say a big thank you to our school board for the work that you do. And here tonight to speak on behalf of our principals, we have our very own hometown hero, Ms. Paula Kopecky, principal from Mitchell Intermediate. And I know she may mention this as well, but typically all of our principals would come tonight to show their appreciation. We asked them not to come this evening because of our staffing situation. We did not want to take the chance of bringing them all together and having a COVID problem. So they are here in spirit, along with Ms. Kopecky.
President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll, it is my honor to stand in front of you as a spokesperson for all of Conroe ISD administrators, educators, staff members, and students to personally thank each and every one of you for all you do for the Conroe Independent School District. You have helped the entire school district overcome a crisis that continues to impact everyone on this planet. When others faced uncertainty, you all collectively supported initiatives. The district proposed to meet the unprecedented needs. Your unwavering support is appreciated more than you will ever know. Daily, you demonstrate strength and dedication as you focus on excellence for the CISD community, teachers, staff members, and most importantly, our students. You unselfishly contribute your time and talents toward the advancement of our schools and the students we serve. You're extraordinary individuals who voluntarily tackle the enormous job of governing our school district. Your actions and decisions affect the present and future lives of everyone in our community. You are helping us build a community in which others want to live and raise their children. You are true servant leaders. Your desire is to focus on the growth and well-being of others. You all emulate the servant leadership philosophy, which is to encourage diversity of thought, create a culture of trust, have an unselfish mindset, and foster leadership in others. Though we are making a special effort this month to show our appreciation, please know we are thankful for all you do 365 days a year. Our students have demonstrated their appreciation by providing the cards, posters, banners, small gifts, drawings, and treats you see here tonight. Please accept these tokens as our expression of thanks for your leadership, support, and for the countless hours you give to make our school district the outstanding place it is to live, to work, and go to school. I ask all in attendance to join tonight in honoring and thanking the CISD Board of Trustees for all their hard work, dedication, and commitment to creating a bright future for all of our students. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kopecky. It's, I don't know if anybody wants to say anything, but I can kind of start off. It's very humble whenever we come in. I watch each one of us kind of walk in, and we see it, and we know it's coming, and we all kind of bow our heads a little bit because it's you guys who are always the heroes. Especially this last Friday when we saw the numbers of the amount of teachers that were out, that they couldn't come to work, over 1,100 of them. And the subs came in and filled that in. You guys are such heroes. You know, a community is driven by the success or failure of a school district, and you guys have a tendency to just say, you know what? We're going to go get this done. We're going to go make it happen. We're going to keep kids in school. We're going to keep teaching. We're going to love these kids. We're going to love them through this, and we're just going to keep going. And it's humbling for us and for me to watch you guys do this day in, day out, and then to take the fiery darts from those who may not have all the information, or just, you know, they're just passionate about their beliefs themselves. And so I personally, thank you very much. This is very kind, but you guys, the spotlight really needs to be on you. So thank you, Ms. Kopecky, for representing the district and the teachers. I appreciate that very much.
You're here.
Very good. Moving on to item three, citizen participation. Do we have anybody signed up today? All right, very good. Please keep in mind that while this meeting is held in public form, the purpose of the meeting is for the Board of Trustees to conduct the business of the district. In accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551, and Board Policy BED, if a patron during public comments addresses an issue that is on tonight's agenda, excuse me, the Board will defer its discussion of this issue until the item is reached on the agenda. For any issue that is not on the Board's proposed agenda, the Board cannot and will not deliberate or make a decision related to that issue. Speakers who have signed up to address the Board during public comment must make all their comments to the Board of Trustees and not the audience. The Board has specific policies under which the Board considers complaints. If your purpose is to seek some type of remedy, the Board cannot discuss or respond to your concern until they have met the requirements of the appropriate district policy. Accordingly, the Board will not hear complaints or derogatory comments about individual students or staff during public comments. Information about how to file a complaint is located on the district's website. The Board expects that everyone in attendance will conduct themselves respectfully, regardless of whether they agree or disagree with the speaker's message. Interrupting speakers or this meeting will not be tolerated. To ensure that the Board can efficiently conduct the district's business, each of the speakers who have registered to address the Board will be given three minutes to participate, to present their comments. Each speaker's time will be displayed on the screen around the room. When the countdown timer reaches zero, the next speaker will be called. Ms. Godfrey, will you please call our first person?
Carolyn May. Evening.
Evening.
Happy New Year to you guys.
You too.
The last time I spoke before the Board was November 16th of this past year. I brought to your attention a video from CNN regarding, that was shown in my grandson's classroom on November 4th, and it was regarding a commentary about Pfizer, who had authorized the release of the COVID injection for children ages five through 11. Needless to say, it was very upsetting to myself and to my grandson's mother. I would like to tell you how much I appreciate the fact that I did get pretty much an immediate response within two weeks of my being here, and I received a phone call from Bethany Mefford, and I understand she's one of your assistant superintendents. We discussed the matter, and I was told she would be doing an investigation on the school, the principal, and the teachers involved. However, I'm sorry to say that since that date, I have not heard anything back from anyone regarding this matter. I did, however, send Ms. Bedford a text message January 2nd, and I still have not received any comments back from her regarding the investigation. So I'm asking if you could please follow up on that? Could I please have a phone call either from the Board or from Ms. Bedford to let me know the result of that investigation? And I would respectfully ask that it be done at least by this time next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Misty Owen-Miller.
So I just wanted to state that as a former teacher, that I can't imagine how exhausted our teachers have to be right now. It just breaks my heart to see all the work they're going through, all the hoops they're jumping through, the red tape that they have to handle, all while trying to serve the children that they chose the profession to work for and to serve. So tonight, I just wanted to come and say thank you to our teachers in the district and to praise them.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, very good. All right, I'd like to turn just a minute over to Dr. Knoll for a message as well.
Thank you very much. First, I'll say, just echo those comments of the great work of our teachers. It's, as mentioned, it's been very difficult. And Mr. Hubert, thank you for your words as everyone, really, we've talked about this being just a community-wide effort to, you know, continue to have school, and everyone has stepped up. And then we are still in the thick of difficult times, but we'll keep pushing forward. And one of the things that we've really prided ourselves on in the last two years is that we've not been focused simply on survival, but we want to thrive. And we see, when we go out on campuses, we see so many wonderful things occurring. And unfortunately, when you watch the news, a lot of times, you only see bad things, right? That's what sells on the news, and so that's what you see. And you may see one negative incident that would occur in a school district, and there are millions of positive things that have happened. But every now and then, the news grabs a hold of a story that's a positive story. And so this is a news story that actually ran last night on KHOU, Channel 11 here in Houston. And we're just going to play this video if we can. I don't think I need to give it much more explanation.
Some of life's greatest lessons can be learned while playing sports.
You know it, and today, a group of seven-year-olds are teaching us a thing or two. Yes! The crowd goes wild. Seven-year-old Andrew May is at the center of that joy-inducing moment. Melissa Correa brings us aboard.
Crank up the sound and open your heart to the idea of just how much better our world could be if we all just passed the ball and cheered. This joy-inducing moment captured on a Conroe ISD playground. Seven-year-old Andrew May was relentless, his first-grade friends happy to assist.
Andrew, do you love basketball?
Yes.
From the dribbling, to the passing, to the roar of the crowd, Andrew May just might be the basketball star we need.
He is just like a ball of sunshine. He, this is Andrew all the time. He is happy.
Happy. Among his siblings, or on the slopes, or at school.
Your heart smiles.
Where Principal Jill Price leads with kindness.
In this pandemic, there's so many worries in the world, and these are just kids playing at recess.
Trying so hard, getting so close, needing just a few more shots.
It's just a moment that everybody deserves.
We all need a cheering squad like that. That is what just touched us so much, was to see those boys in action when they didn't even know they were being filmed. As a mom, I wanted to just hug those other mothers of those boys.
What do you think the world would be like if more of us rooted for others?
Awesome. Kind, peaceful, I mean, wouldn't we all sleep better?
It's a good reminder of what good vibes can do. When you put out positive energy, it comes back to you.
Andrew lives with Down Syndrome. Part of his day at Buckaloo Elementary is spent getting his needs met through specialized learning. The other half, Andrew shares with all of his friends.
It is an environment of inclusion and kindness and love and respect, and it's modeled from the top down.
And practiced on the playground.
It doesn't have to be limited to seven-year-olds at an elementary school.
Right. Create the space, celebrate the win.
And you keep going. I mean, just to stay with something.
The people.
Pass it on. Melissa Correa, KHOU 11 News.
The smile on Andrew's face long after that shot while sitting there with his parents is priceless and really.
So what a story. Just beautiful, and as the mom mentioned, the attitude and what you see there, that love, respect, kindness starts at the top, and that starts with you all. And so we thank you for modeling what you expect of us as employees, and we appreciate the fact that it carries down to our most precious in Conroe ISD. So thank you, and thank you to everybody that plays a huge role in making this a place that every child is loved, so thank you.
That's a great message, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up and sharing it with us. Need to move now to the consent agenda. I have not received any phone calls from anybody to pull anything off, so I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move approval of consent agenda as presented. Second, the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed, by the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Also, if it's all right, I'd like to move item seven, human resources up, if that's okay? Is it twelve? Excuse me, twelve.
Twelve, yes, sir.
Twelve, yeah. I go back to second grade for that. Yeah, twelve. It's twelve. So, Dr. Knoll, human resources, naming principal of Howser Elementary. Turn it over to you.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. As we know, it's really one of the most exciting things that we do here in these board meetings are to name principals. But we understand the significance of that role, the impact that they have on campuses. We have a vacancy at Howser Elementary that will be opening here in the next few weeks as our principal there has had to make a family decision, which we respect and appreciate the work that Ms. Lozano has done. And she's left, you know, the campus in a wonderful place, but we need to have strong leadership to come in and carry it to the next phase. And one of the things that we have focused on in the last few years has really been to build up our assistant principals. We've offered opportunities for extended training. We've also asked our assistant principals to get out of their comfort zone and to seek out new opportunities and move to new buildings rather than stay in one place and become too comfortable to extend themselves, which is not always easy to do or always comfortable. And the person I'm going to recommend tonight has really done all of those things that we would ask someone to do. She's had the experience at three different buildings as an assistant principal, working with great principals, and I know that that's going to serve her well. So currently, Liz Kahler serves as the assistant principal at San Jacinto Elementary. And tonight, I'm proud to make the recommendation that we would name her to be the new principal at Howser Elementary. So Ms. Liz Kahler for Howser Elementary Principal.
All right, do we have a motion?
So move.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Very good. All right, motion second, any discussion? Very good. I call it, all those in favor, show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries. Congratulations.
President Hubert, members of the board, Dr. Knoll, I'm humbled to be standing in front of you today as principal at Howser Elementary. Thank you, Board of Trustees, for your commitment to excellence and dedication to our students. It's an honor and privilege to serve the community, staff, and students at Howser, and I cannot wait to work side by side with the staff to positively impact student lives. I look forward to continuing the hard work that Angela Lozano and the Howser staff have implemented on campus and delving into the traditions and values held strong in the Oak Ridge community as we prepare our Howser Hawks to be successful War Eagles. I am not a product of my own work, but of the many leaders who have mentored me over the past years. I'd like to take a moment to thank them for their leadership and encouragement. Dr. Debbie Spoon, thank you for seeing my potential at a young age and inspiring me to pursue my career as an administrator. Lindsay Arjwan, you have showed me how empowering others creates a culture of excellence and allows people to achieve success in ways they never imagined. Jamie Allmond, although we've only partnered together for six months, your leadership, encouragement, and friendship will have a lasting impression on my life. Shalonda Burks, and all my assistant principal partners that I've worked with, thank you for learning beside me, laughing with me, and helping me grow. I'd like to take a moment to recognize my family. I'll start with my children, Colin, who's a fourth grader at Broadway Elementary, and Kelsey, who is filming, is a seventh grader at York Junior High. Their success serves as a constant reminder of the great things happening in Conroe ISD. My husband, John, thank you for being my biggest supporter and cheerleader. You continue to believe in me, even on my hard days, and show me that I can achieve anything I set my mind to. Thank you to my mother-in-law, Diane, for speaking words of affirmation into my life. And finally, my mom, Sue, who is here with me tonight, and my dad, Steve, watching online, thank you for showing me from a very young age that the sky's the limit. You taught me anything is possible if you work hard and are kind to others. I couldn't ask for better role models. All of my years in Conroe ISD have led me to this moment, and I'm excited to begin my journey as principal at Howser. Thank you once again for this incredible opportunity to lead.
Right, shine on!
Congratulations. You're going to do amazing.
Great job. Thank you so much for all you do. Very good. Fun stuff. Congratulations. You'll do a great job. It's a great place. It's being left in good hands, and you're going to take it to the next step. So thank you very much.
And I'm sure you all have some celebrating you'd like to go do. You're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to go and enjoy and celebrate this evening. So thank you.
Awesome. You're welcome. All right, moving on to item five, administration. A, consider approval of attendance zone boundary changes associated with the opening of Gordon Reed Elementary School. All right, Mr. Chris McCord.
President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll, I come to you tonight representing the Annette Gordon Reed Attendance Boundary Committee, asking for your approval of scenario 7.3.3 to populate our new campus serving the Conroe High feeder zone. We talked about this a couple of months ago when we first showed you this picture. This is a computer rendering of the front of Annette Gordon Reed Elementary School. This is if I'm in the front, looking at it from the north to the south, and I'm happy to say that the campus is on schedule to open in the fall, August of 2022. It'll hold a capacity of 950 students. It'll open at 2,045 McHale Road. It'll be pre-K through sixth pending your approval, and we're excited to tell you more about that plan tonight. Also, thanks to Mr. Foster for a recently given picture from a drone at the end of last week showing the current construction status at Annette Gordon Reed Elementary. If you look at the foreground, you can see. foreground, you can see McHale Road. We're looking in the background, you'll see the east and past that the city of Conroe. So this is the current status of the construction. You can see the queuing space, which is fantastic, along with the parking and the current status of the building as of late last week at 2045 McHale Road. Just to look at it from a satellite view, you can see a good picture of the schools that populate the Conroe High feeder from I-45 headed to the west, including in the yellow square on the left on the western edge, Gordon Reed Elementary. An important player and a campus getting much relief potentially from this process, Stewart Elementary to the southwest on Fish Creek. Also important is Geisinger to the north, also Crier Intermediate to the north, and the other school in play receiving relief would be Rice Elementary, BB Rice, to the south along I-45. Here is a look at the current elementary attendance zone maps for the Conroe High School feeder. The most important things to point out in the green is the current zone, which is a wide swath of geography, of which is occupied by Stewart Elementary. If you see the blue, you see Geisinger, you see the current status of Geisinger, and the other important one to point out on this screen in the light green is BB Rice Elementary located just to the south closer to I-45. The intermediate zone, we have some symmetrical patterns here for our feeders in the Conroe High for intermediates. But if you look at the red on the left on the west, you see the current status of the intermediate feeder, and the intermediate students in grades five and six on the western fringe of the Conroe High feeder zone are served at this time by Stewart Elementary. The other feeder I would point out in yellow is Crier. And Crier is growing. It's expected to grow rapidly, and we're looking to get some relief for the Crier Intermediate Campus also. So if you look at the yellow picture on the slide, some of the zones on the western edge could be impacted, and we'll talk about those in a little more detail and depth over the next few slides. We talked about this a couple of months ago, that the U.S. Census Bureau came out and told us that the city of Conroe is one of the 10 fastest-growing metropolitan areas in the United States of America. That's good. It's a reflection of the city. It's a reflection of the job you do, and through your strategic thinking, we are poised to be in great shape. If you look to the south where Stewart Elementary is in the southwest, we have a school to accommodate fast growth there. And then over to the western edge, we have Annette Gordon Reed Elementary, of which is the reason we're here tonight. So we're in great shape thanks to your strategic thinking. Also, part of this picture is Geisinger to the north, and you can see much, if not the entire Geisinger Population Attendance Zone is a high-growth area, as well as is BB Rice located to the south. So all these areas are linked together, and that's what we will discuss this evening. So the committee, we want to develop an attendance boundary for Annette Gordon Reed Elementary. We want to provide some relief to Geisinger Elementary, which is going to need it, to need it, which is projected to have over 1,200 kids by the year 2028. We also want to give some relief to some other campuses, including Crier and BB Rice, but the principal campus that needs assistance in the near term is Stewart Elementary. So that is the primary reason, although they're all related. We've had an all-star cast of Conroe feeder principals and parents to help us over the five-month process. We appreciate them. You see a list of them right here in their names and thank them. I thank them for the committee and for myself and Dr. Heinz. You see campus personnel, excuse me, district personnel represented here, and these are the people that helped put together the slides, to vet the data, to make sure that we were addressing all the needs. A special shout out to people that kept us on track, Regina Woody Crane and Jessica Villarreal, who put in endless amounts of time to help us. And his name is not listed, but I'll tell you the brains behind this and the effort and the vision. And the assistance to me is Dr. Chris Heinz to my left and your right, and I cannot tell you how much effort, time, heart, and soul he has put into the process. So I appreciate Dr. Heinz greatly. We tried to be transparent, communicate information all along the way to make sure that people know how it's going, what we're thinking, what the options are, and why we are going down the road we're going. And this attendance boundary process webpage is solid. You see it listed right here, the link. It has a wealth of information on it, including on the webpage are the 27 scenario as in iterations of attendance boundaries for Annette Gordon Reed that have been under consideration. So you can see in the no longer in consideration on the red X, you can click and see the 26 ones that we've looked at, and then the 27th in the green check is 7.3.3. And we're going to talk about that. But before we talk about that, we'll talk about the fact that the committee is trying to, we have worked hard to realize and go through the process realizing these are real kids and real families. And where you go to school is important to you, and we want to make it the best experience for everybody. So these are streets and/or subdivisions that we'll be talking about tonight. It's not all inclusive, but it gives you a good idea about what streets or landmarks or subdivisions fall within each zone. This is the elementary recommendation from our committee that we put together over the last five months. If you look at it, just taking a quick tour, if you look at on the lower-left southwest corner, you will see the resultant recommendation for the Stewart Elementary Zone. It is indicated in green. Also, in gray, you will see two shades of gray. The gray area represents the recommendation by the committee for an elementary attended zone for Annette Gordon Reed Elementary. Now, the special note, the areas in dark gray are areas that would transition from another school to Annette Gordon Reed. All the gray, light gray area formerly was a part of Stewart. The area in dark gray north of 2854 would theoretically, pending your approval, transition from Geisinger to Annette Gordon Reed Elementary. 81B located south of 2854 would transition from BB Rice to Annette Gordon Reed Elementary. It's important to note there are no students that live in that zone as of this time. Going to the intermediate level, this is a picture of the resultant recommendation of the intermediate zone by the committee. One thing that's important to note is the committee worked tirelessly to put together a very clean transition. So if I was to go to school for elementary school at Stewart, I would go to intermediate school at Stewart. If I was to go to elementary school at Annette Gordon Reed Elementary, I would go to intermediate school for fifth and sixth grade at Annette Gordon Reed Elementary. So if you look here on the intermediate side, you see Stewart represented in red. In gray, you see Annette Gordon Reed. The dark gray areas at the intermediate level would transition to Annette Gordon Reed from Crier. Crier is growing. It still has a little room, but it's in that area that's expected to grow rapidly. So it would give some relief to Crier, and it would help populate the Annette Gordon Reed school. So you see the resultant, yellow would represent Crier when this is transition is potentially approved. Also worthy of special note, we only impacted just a small section, two sections on the east side of I-45. And if you look at the dark pink area, you'll see 14B and A-15. Those areas would transition from Bosman to Travis. Currently, no students live in either of those sections that would potentially transition. This would be done, Bosman's expected to grow and grow rapidly. So this gives us a little bit of a hedge and a little bit of help in the short term, medium term, and long term for Bosman Intermediate. So that is the thinking for the committee for 14B and A-15 to potentially transition there. We looked at, like I said, 27 different possibilities. One thing we wanted to do was to meet the needs and goals of what our committee was set out to do, but do it by impacting the least number of children that we possibly could. And of the 27 different iterations that we had, scenario 7.3.3 impacts 557 students. So it is right at the bottom as far as the smallest impact, while still giving us exactly what we need in the short, medium, and long term for Geisinger, for Stewart, for Annette Gordon Reed, for BB Rice, for Crier. So 557 students total impact, 415 K through four, and 142 five through six. That is a quick overview, and that is 7.3.3. And we are here tonight, once again, to recommend or to ask for your approval for the scenario 7.3.3. I know there may be questions, and Dr. Heinz and I are here to try to answer any questions you have.
I'd like to entertain a motion, and then we can ask our questions.
I move. We approve as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
My first one, if I'm a parent of a fifth grader at Stewart this year, will I have the option of keeping my sixth grader at Stewart next year, or am I going to be forced to go to Gordon Reed for sixth grade for one year?
There's a possibility to request a transfer. The parent would be responsible for transportation to and from, but yes, sir.
Okay. And are we, I'm always one to ask this question. Dr. Heinz is looking at me like he knows it's coming. I know that we looked at the ECODIS numbers for these. Are we greatly affecting any of our ECODIS numbers for any of these campuses involved?
Of all the scenarios we looked at, the end result was almost identical ECODIS numbers. As far as being Title I or not Title I, it'll be closed kind of right on the bubble. Almost all the scenarios we had resulted in Stewart having pretty much close to the same potential number for economically disadvantaged. So taking that into account, looking at it, talking about it every step of the way over five months, this scenario was right in line and addressed almost all the needs that we were looking at, and is right in line properly with ECODIS with all the other possible iterations.
We're not risking one of the current Title I campuses falling out of that funding or anything?
We do not believe so.
No, and this school right now, our model is, some of it will vary depending on who's transfers and who doesn't transfer. We're right at about 40%, which is right at that Title I cutoff. So we're right on the bubble. We don't know yet. And then just the reality of the geography and the way the zones are, as a result, Stewart will become less economically disadvantaged. The impact is minimal on Geisinger.
Okay, thank you.
And also, I might add, we're looking at potentially pre-K through six, pre-K through six for Annette Gordon Reed Elementary School.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
So how many feedback comments did we get during this process?
Right around 100. We held two Zoom presentations. We held two in-person meetings at Stewart Elementary, and we had maybe eight to 10 people show up the first presentation. We had one scheduled the other evening, and we didn't have anybody show up, other than our own people.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one.
Yes, ma'am.
How long has version 7.3.3 been online and available to the community to look at?
It went up before the holidays, so it would have been the last week in December that we were here, then went up on the website.
Okay, thank you.
And to echo that, it took some of the best tenets and aspects of the ones that we presented to you back in the fall and blended them together for a scenario that would best address it for everybody as far as kids.
Yeah, appreciate it.
All right, I have had an opportunity to speak to some of the parents as well that are being affected by this, and their comments were that they appreciated the process, that the inclusion that they were allowed to have as well in coming up with these boundaries. And they felt like that the district had the kids, students' best interests at heart to make sure that they were all being paired up where it should be. So I appreciate the process that you guys go through. It's extremely diligent, and it takes a long time, but you can feel just the love that you have for making sure that it's done right. So I appreciate that personally. All right, I'd like to call the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Very good. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, item B. Consider adoption of the 2022-2023 school calendar.
All right, Dr. Upshaw.
President Hubert, members of the board, Dr. Noel, I come to you tonight for consideration of adoption of the 2022-2023 school calendar process. So just a reminder of our timeline, today is the day that we come to you with our recommendation from our district-level planning committee. We did meet with them last week to finalize what we're presenting to you today. So just a reminder, this is our current school calendar. I'll give you a minute to look at that. Some things to just highlight here. It is 176 days, and it was an early start, early end date for the calendar. Through the feedback we had from our district-level planning committee in November, and then also with our presentation to you, we went ahead and drafted three new calendars, and here you can see the results of the three drafts we sent out to our community. You can see draft one was in favor of what we bring forth to you today, very close to a second, but was the one in favor. So surprising here, our students really appreciate draft one calendar. Looking at those results. So after recommendation from the district-level planning committee, we're coming to you today to be able to present and for your approval, draft 1.2. Just something to note from the difference of what was put out for the feedback is the addition of the March 20th date, which is a staff development day for our staff, but a student inclement weather day. So that's that last change on the bullet, and you can see that on the calendar. So if we don't have any questions, that is our recommendation to our board.
Motion will accept the 2023 calendar as presented, 2022-2023 calendar as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or conversation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So as I understood, we started this past year on August the 11th. Is that right? And so that was the earliest we've ever started before. And so now we're looking at going to August the 10th. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make that clear. So it's just one more day?
It is one more day, and our trend through the years just shows that our staff and administrators and our students really prefer the early start and that midweek start. So it is the most popular in our community.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
What day do we get out this year, this calendar year? Is it in June or is it in May?
No, we get out May 26th.
May 26th, okay.
So in the new draft, I don't mean to make you dizzy, it is the 25th. So we start a day earlier.
We get out a day earlier.
It's a hard balance, you know. It is a bit of an earlier start. I mean, it's an early start as we've had, but the things that people love, in order to achieve those things, it requires a bit of an early start. They want that week of vacation at Thanksgiving, the three weekends at the Christmas break. They want to have some holidays sprinkled in, and they want to be out before Memorial Day. So to achieve those things, this is, and it's in line with a lot of other local district calendars as well. So we sort of starting to see some commonality amongst districts around this type of calendar.
And the midweek seems to continue to be popular amongst teachers and students.
Absolutely. Kind of gives you, you think of a freshman trying to figure out his schedule, and there was scheduled change over the weekend. We're able to fix all of that and have a fresh start on Monday and not miss much instruction versus trying to have a whole week trying to figure that out.
Right, understood. I just didn't know if the attendance was, when we start on the 10th, is the attendance on the 10th less than the attendance on the 15th?
It is, certainly. I mean, I think, but part of that is because there's a registration process going on. Even if we started on the 15th, I would argue that the attendance on the 15th would be less than the attendance on the 18th would be. Some kids are going to be slower get there, and they need to register the first couple of days. It just happens.
With the instruction time now being calculated in minutes instead of days, I know in our previous calendars, we've had a slight buffer there just in case we needed to release half a day early because of an impending ice storm, just have a 10 o'clock start time to let the roads drain, something like that. Do we have minute buffers built in here in case we need, you know, two inclement weather days or one and a half inclement weather days?
So it's my understanding we have two. I'm going to look over at Dr. Heinz.
We do. We have two.
So Dr. Upshaw, as I look at the new draft, they would be out the week of spring break, which is March 13th through 17th. And then if we did not have an inclement weather day, they would also be out the following Monday, the 20th.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
It's an extra day.
Extra spring break.
As long as we don't have bad weather.
Correct. Teachers, it's a staff development day. Students, it is an extra day.
Right, that's what I meant. Yes, so we have two, plus this would be a third, should it be needed.
And Mr. Sanders guarantees no bad weather days, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sanders. That'll make my life much easier.
I'm going to have to call Frank Billingsley.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. I'd like to recess the meeting and turn some time over to Dr. Noel.
All right, thank you. At this time, we're going to have our public hearing on the 2020-2021 Texas Academic Performance Report. We're going to make a little transition here of the podium so that we can get Dr. Heinz set up to make this presentation. At the conclusion of this presentation, they'll have an opportunity, if anyone would like to make a comment about the presentation, we'll have that opportunity for you as well.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure to be able to present tonight the 2020 and 21 Annual Performance Report. We do this annually that coincides with the release of the Texas Academic Performance Report. And really, before we get started, I want to give certainly a shout out to Dr. Taylor, who's helped put this together this evening, and Jessica Villarreal, my assistant, who's not here this evening, but she's put in a lot of hours helping with this. This is really a compilation of a lot of reports and tonight, we're just going to cover the highlights because obviously I don't think the audience would like to be here for four days while we present all of this information. But it is all going to be available on the website. Most of it's really available through links to the TEA's website. But just to highlight what is part of this report, it is the Texas Academic Performance Report, which was released in December. And there's also one posted on every campus website as well as the district's website. It also includes the PMS Financial Stand Report. And this report's always about a year and a half behind because of the way the financial data is posted at the state level. And then the district accreditation status will be shared, the performance objectives, which includes the district and campus plans, which are already up online, the report on violent incidents that we are required to present annually. And so is also our student code of conduct is online. And then the student performance in post-secondary institutions. And then finally, we're required to provide a summary of our number of counselors and librarians that we have. So I'll start with the quick highlights. And again, this is just kind of hitting the greatest hits. I'm going to kind of work through this fairly quickly, but accountability rating last year was we were not rated, we were declared a state of disaster. We did receive our special education determination status and we did meet requirements, which was very difficult to meet timelines with some of the challenges that we've had. And so I just would point every year is a challenge that we have a pandemic. This is just kind of an enrollment trend. One of the things that's in our report is our enrollment. And you can see the 2021 school year and the state reports enrollment in ADA as opposed to say just actual bodies. But you can see we did not grow much between twenty and twenty-one, we know that. This year, we've had unprecedented growth, over two thousand students of what we projected, we're up over roughly three thousand. And so next year, you'll see a little bit of a spike. So who makes up those students? You can see this is who we are in our makeup. There's some new categories that have been included and a few things I'll point out. You'll see the term EB for EB students, that is emerging bilingual students. They keep changing the names. So it used to be limited English proficient or English learners or English language learners. Now it's EB. So just to kind of refresh that when you see that. Also, we include dyslexia numbers, numbers of students in foster care that are homeless, that are immigrants, that are migrants, that are whose families are connected to the military. And we've included mobility numbers. These are students that were in school in a campus less than eighty-three percent of the time for the school year, students in special education at risk and GT. So I mentioned about emerging bilingual students. We are a very international community. We have eighty-four languages that have been reported to us, other than English that are spoken in the homes. Of course, Spanish being the most frequent language. You can see with over, almost over fifteen thousand five hundred families reporting that is their home language. But you can see, these are just languages that have at least thirty students or students that have identified with that home language. So we have a very international community. I'll shift gears and just give a few highlights for our bilingual ESL performance and report. This is the first one, it's just an overview of our students and our population and what programs they're in. And you can see we have two hundred and one students in our two-way dual-language classes. Those are classes where students, their home language is English, learning Spanish, as well as being mixed in with students whose home language is Spanish. As you can see, we have students that also opt out of bilingual and we have some students that are going to ESL because we don't have enough numbers to make a bilingual class. We have three hundred and fifty-six students who denied services, two hundred and forty-six that exited. TELPASS is the annual assessment that is given to our students that are acquiring English. And they are scored from categories from beginning to advanced high in each grade and they're measured in reading and writing and speaking and listening. And this is obviously a breakdown and you would expect to have more at the beginning stages in the lower grades. I would point out that in every grade level, we have students that enter our schools for the first time. So we have students that enroll in ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade who do not speak English. And so they would start off at the beginning level. The goal is to advance students at least one level a year, if not more. We always try to look at how are our students that are in our bilingual program doing. And one of the things we've been working on over the last few years, and you can see that in many of our categories, we outperformed the state this year, which is, we've shown some real growth in our area of bilingual performance. And some of that had to do with this past year, of course, we were in a pandemic and we, like every district, saw some regression. We did not see as much regression as the state did. And I think that helped us because some areas, they dropped lower than, we didn't drop much. And in fact, in the area bilingual, our scores actually went up this last year. So we're very proud of that. It went up when a lot of other scores were going down. This is our attendance trend. And you can see, last year was a little bit of an outlier. We had the best attendance probably in the history of Conroe Independent School District last year with ninety-nine percent. I know that goes against a lot of, might scratch your head, say how that happened during the pandemic. Last year, we had the option where students could check in remotely when they couldn't come to school. And so our students did a great job, ninety-nine percent attendance. We will not see that this year. We might set a record this year on low attendance, I don't know. But we are working on attendance this year. We're hovering right around that probably that ninety-two percent rate right now. In terms of how we compared with peer groups and districts in our county, this is just a little quick comparison. We're the blue column and the red column is the state and the green are some other districts. And we do benchmark from time to time to see how we do compared to other districts. And so we can try to learn some things that they might be doing and we want to pick up on. Tenure enrollment trend and disciplinary placements, these are students that are placed during the year either in a DAEP setting or the JJAEP, alternative education setting. And so you can see, our goal is to bring that number down. And we've been trending in the right direction over the last ten years, as has the state. We're the blue line and the state is the red line. So we want that number to be lower. This is our annual dropout rate. And you can see our annual dropout rate was point three percent for the class of two thousand and twenty. And so all the data that goes around our graduate level is from the class of two thousand and twenty. So there's always a year lag on pulling that data. So some of our data is live from last year's performance, but when we talk about dropouts and completion rates, we'll go back to two thousand and twenty. So when we look at the class of two thousand and twenty, we also track the cohort, that is the group of students that started and then finished four years later. So at the end of four years, they graduated or they received their GED or they're still in school or they dropped out. So those are the four categories that a student would end up in. And you can see we're the blue, we had ninety-seven point three percent of that class that graduated in four years. And then a little, about a half percent that received a GED, one point four percent continued and point eight percent dropped out from that group. We also track five years and six-year cohorts. I did include a five-year cohort going back to the class of two thousand and nineteen. And you can see, we do, that extra year, we do get more graduates. So we do have some students that, from that continued list, that either moved to the graduated list or maybe they drop out and we don't hear from them anymore, or maybe they get their GED. But you can see that extra year does help a number of our students. So how do we do on STAR test? The taper includes all kinds of STAR data. I won't go through it all, but just a quick summary, I picked one, the percent that approaches grade level at or above grade level in all subjects. And this is again how we did compared to our comparison groups, we were eighty-one percent. We also look at the percent that meets the grade level expectation. So it's a little bit higher and it's something we would shoot for, for our students. And you can see we're at fifty-eight percent. And then master's grade level, we were at thirty-two percent of our students performed at that level. College-ready graduates, this is, and again, Mr. Colson, if you were, if you shared this information in an earlier report in November, but I'll just quickly hit a little bit of it. College-ready graduates are students that score at a certain level on the SAT or the ACT, or they pass the TSI, or they take three hours of English or three hours of math, college credit or nine hours total, or they receive an associate's degree, or they make a three on an AP test. But these are the ways that students might be deemed college-ready. And this is an area certainly we're working on. As we all know, the end of two thousand and twenty, we were closed, so we missed out on a lot of SAT and ACT tests and AP tests. So we know it did impact our numbers that year, but it so impacted other districts as well, something we're working on. The other one is career military-ready graduates. The students that enlisted in the military were not included in this set of data, the state's not including those for the couple of years till they work out some metrics. But we are including students that receive advanced certificates in workforce programs. And so this was our percentage of fifteen point nine percent. And again, that's another area we're targeting for improvement. Some of it, we may even be higher, some of it's reporting. Again, that was the end of that year was kind of a difficult one, a lot of certification tests were missed. This is the percentage of students from that class of two thousand and twenty that took AP tests. We were right around twenty-nine point two percent. And again, that was a year, I think, everybody was impacted with the spring, with being closed down and in remote instruction. This was the percentage of students of that group that took the test, that scored at or above the criterion on their test. And some students took multiple tests. Dual credit, twenty-five point eight percent of the students participated in at least one dual credit course, some took several. We had a couple of students that actually completed their associate's degree.
I could point out, one of the things that's interesting, you don't see it, is that we have a really strong AP and dual credit programs. So like we're near the top on both of those, or a lot of times you'll see districts focus on one or the other. So they'll be really low in one and then bump up really high in the next where we really try to offer both paths. So we're proud that we do that.
This was the class of two thousand and twenty percentage of students scoring at or above the criterion on the SAT or the ACT. We did very well in that area, sixty-four point six percent. The average SAT score for the class of two thousand and twenty was eleven hundred and forty-seven. The ACT average was, composite score was twenty-five. Again, both of those did very well. So I'm going to shift gears. Part of the report includes some financial data, so I'll try to hit a couple of highlights. One that Conroe is proud of is we've been a Texas smart school, recognized for twelve consecutive years at five stars, which is the highest level. We've also, this is our third consecutive year to receive the TASBO Award of Merit in Purchasing. And so that's also a recognition for our purchasing department and their standards for purchasing. We'll share our fund balance information. As of the end of August of twenty-one, our fund balance was one hundred and seventy-one million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred dollars, which represented twenty-nine percent of our final amended budget for that year. Share the tax rate just briefly. We're the district in red, districts in blue are often districts we compare with, and green. And so you can see that we have a pretty interesting, one of the lowest tax rates in the area at one dollar and seventeen point six. Our instructional expense per student, you can see we're the blue column. And again, this is just a comparison with some other districts, but you can see our instructional expense was at five thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars per student, which is part of the overall total operating expenditure of per student. And we look at that. So you can see we do a pretty good job of trying to put a higher percentage towards instruction, even though we're spending on the low end per student compared to our peer group. And this includes districts in our county as well as districts that we compare ourselves to. So how does that budget break out? And this is just a typical listing by function. Function is kind of that category or area that the district spends. And you can kind of see, I'll point out a couple of areas compared to the state. You know, we try to spend higher in the instructional side of that function than we do than the state. Something that we try to do is spend less on administration than the state. And you look at general administration, we're a little under half of what the state average is. Of course, we're a larger district, so we get some efficiencies. And this is kind of a comparison of how we look with some of our comparison large district group. You can see, so again, some of those areas that we really do work on, our general administration, keep our costs down. Security, we're right a little bit ahead of average than we want to be. And so those are decisions that we make, we want to spend a little bit more on that. And we look at guidance and counseling, you can see we're right there in the mix with our other comparison groups and we've been adding to that over the years.
And we know transportation is driven by our size.
Our average number of miles per rider is higher than our comparative group. So we do transport students more miles. And this is just a kind of a comparison, we look at within our county, the school districts that are in our county, kind of look at that data. Little bit of staff information. So there's some staff information that's included in the taper, just a quick overview, just a few highlights. Sixty-three point seven percent of our staff is professional, two point six percent is administration at the campus level, point five percent at the central administration level. Our departments are a little bit higher, some of that is bus drivers because we do transport so many students, so many miles. The average years of experience, a little bit less than the state average. Of course, we are a fast-growing district and opened up a lot of campuses in the last few years. The average experience of principals is a little bit higher, six point eight, than the state average. The average years of district with the district is a little less than the state average. Our turnover rate is less than the state average and our average teacher salary at sixty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars was higher than the state average by about four thousand. Now shifting, the next part of the report is criminal incidents. For the twenty twenty-one school year, we had thirty-six reportable criminal incidents that were, that took place on eight different campuses. Thirty-one of those thirty-six reportable offenses were felony-controlled substance. And I think it's safe to say the majority of those thirty-one involved THC vaping, which has been something that our campuses have been working on. That's been a challenge and we've seen some improvements, but certainly it's an area that we are working on. So these are the, this is the breakdown by campus of where those incidents occur and how many. Again, we report this information. So the other part of this report is our post-high school report. How do our students do when they go to college? So this is based on the two thousand and twenty graduates that showed up at a four-year or two-year college in the fall of two thousand and twenty. So that'd been the fall after they graduated. And this is the enrollment by campus in terms of our remember, where I would point out that students attending private colleges or colleges out of state would not be in this report. So this is Texas colleges that are in public two-year or four-year colleges. And also in the year, the class of two thousand and twenty, we did not have a graduating class at Grand Oaks High School, so they won't be on this report. And you might recall, that year Oak Ridge High School had a very large graduating class. And so you can see it reflected in the numbers. There was a total of seventeen hundred and eighty-six students that reported in that fall snapshot. This was just a quick highlight of the universities and colleges. And you can see Lone Star Montgomery is our number one destination for Conroe graduates, Texas A&amp;M falling in second, and Sam Houston State in third. So the final part of this report includes a report of our counselors and librarians for the twenty twenty-one school year. So this is the last school year. And you can see that all of our campuses have at least one counselor and one librarian. All of our larger elementary schools have two counselors. All of our intermediates now have two counselors this year. And you can see, at the junior high and high school, there's multiples. All campuses have at least one librarian. And you can see we had a total of one hundred and seventy-three counselors in that report and sixty-five librarians. So I'll just sum it up by reminding everyone that the entire report will be posted tomorrow and there'll be the various links and they'll all be on our website and that will be available for review. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heinz. At this time, we'll open it to public comment. If you have a comment you'd like to make in regards to the annual performance report, you can make your way to the podium this time. Okay. I think we have one. If you would, state your name, please, and then you can make your comment.
My name's Savannah Eldridge. I'm the Criminal Justice Chair for the local NAACP, and I'd just like to commend the board and the school district on your decline in numbers for referrals to DAEP and JJAEP. I appreciate your commitment to restorative practices and trying to keep every child in the classroom. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other comments? Seeing none, that will conclude our-
I had a question.
Yes.
Well, not necessarily a question, more of a request. On the disciplinary placements, can you just send me the demographics for that problem, please? On your disciplinary placements, can you just send me the demographics for the breakdown of that? Just send it to me. Thank you.
All right, that will conclude our hearing.
All right. Back in session, time is 7:04. Moving on to item seven, believe this time. Planning and construction aid, consider approval of a guaranteed max price amendment for the safety and security 2022 project and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute contract documents. All right, Mr. Foster.
All right, good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. It's my pleasure to bring forward for your consideration and approval our guaranteed maximum price amendment for our safety and security project installment 2022. So if you recall, in February 2020, our Board of Trustees selected Ellisport Constructors to be our construction manager at risk. And over the course of the last few years, they've been working throughout the district, moving through this district-wide effort. For the 2022 installment, PBK Architects and LEAF Engineers have been working with Ellisport to develop the work that makes up what is the scope for this approval tonight. So we're asking for your approval of $5,156,997 for our 2022 installment of our safety and security project.
Do we have a motion?
I move approval as presented.
A motion?
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed, by the same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Foster, while you're up there, we'll move on to the received capital improvement updates, your beautiful pictures and-
Pretty pictures, it's true, yes. So this time, I'd like to bring you up to speed on our capital improvements we have underway throughout the district. I'm going to start you with Creighton Elementary. This is the overhaul project that's pretty invasive on that campus, going to keep us there for a long time. As I've described to you over the last few months, we're entering that lull process as we get our plans together for, to finish this job over the next coming summer. You can see this nice pretty picture of the new exterior wall, that will be the expanded kitchen and serving lines for that building, which will be the primary focus for the work as we're approaching this next summer. We are working on some utility connections that'll help us fire up the new fire sprinkler system, that'll be the, help bring this project to completion. The project is currently on schedule, and we're scheduled to finish it up this coming summer in August of 2022. Now, at our new Morehead Junior High School, which is in the Candy Creek High School feeder zone, you can see from our overhead picture, the building structure is essentially erected at this point, so we've got building envelope ongoing from the fine arts and athletics end, which would be on the left end, the right-hand side of the building on the screen. Moving towards the left, as you can see, the yellow is the building sheen as we move through the library and the academic wing to the classrooms, which would be on the left-hand side. On the, I mean, the focus here is to bring that building to a dry-end condition, so you can see masonry is our biggest scope of work that's underway currently, and that project is currently on schedule, and we're scheduled to open in August of 2023. At Conroe High Schools is our major overhaul of the Conroe High School campus. You can see from our overhead picture here, on the right-hand side of the screen is the new CTE slab, building ready except the building steel, when it arrives in the next week or so. And then in the, kind of the center middle of the screen, just to the left of center, is the blue area where you're seeing the foundation work for the new athletics venues that'll help us free up some areas and begin the, working on the rest of that campus. So the focus is on that athletic venue, so you can see the foundation work, it is underway on that site, so that we can be prepared when the steel arrives, so it can become a vertical project very soon. And we look forward to bringing you some pictures that you can see standing up shortly. Now, we are on schedule for that project, and we're scheduled to be on-site through December of 2025. Now, at our new Jet Center, which is at the North Enzo de Wood Forest Bank Stadium, that project is wrapping up nicely, so you can see our overall, our site is kind of receiving back to the building itself and starting to clean up around the site itself. On the inside of that building, you're seeing the finishes and other things that bring that building's personality and function together. And we're wrapping up the details, and we look forward to bringing that building to the change of completion late in February next month. At Gordon Reed Elementary School, which now, thanks to you, has an attendance boundary, will be populated for students in August of 2022, have you report that building is currently on schedule. As you can see from the overhead picture here, we're moved around the building, for the most part, in a dry condition, working on the front door, which is the way the contractors always like to work, is their way out the front door. So as Mr. McCord described earlier, the building paving, things of that nature around the site have been developed and are in use heavily by the construction traffic currently. And as we're working on the inside, you're seeing things like light fixtures and ceiling grid and things like that begin to populate that building as it comes near finish. Our plan is to occupy that as a district early in the summer, and then we'll outfit it and turn it over to school in August of 2022. At Oak Ridge High School, this is overhaul of the Oak Ridge High School campus, plus our South County CTE project. So it's still kind of hard to see what's going on on that site, as we're anxiously working with utility companies to free up the building slabs. You can see, if you look really closely, the building structural steel has been delivered, and it's staged to go vertical as soon as we can get the final utilities out of the way and get the building slab, great beams, and all that other things erected for the new, first is the new administration wing, which moves admin to the foreground of this picture, and the new central plant, which will be the heart and soul of the new upgraded air conditioning system, that'll make that one of our new, more efficiently operated campuses upon completion. As we progress through that, we'll expand this to the new CTE building, and then do some reorganization on the inside of the campus. Overall, the project is on schedule, and we're scheduled to be there through the summer of 2023. At Wilkerson Intermediate, this is our P classroom addition, which has been affected by our supply chain comments, or supply chain issues, rather. And our contractors did work diligently over the break, like they said they would. And they, you can see here, the gymnasium structure is complete, and I'd like to point out, on the inside of the building, over the Christmas break, we were able to convert the old multi-use cafegematorium space into a nice cafeteria space. You can see the new floors, they get to leave the tables down all day, it's so nice on campus. And the gym is open and ready to use. The children were able to use it on their first day back from winter break, the first week of January. So you can see, we're missing basketball striping, that got done over this past weekend, and the contractor continues to work in the evenings and weekends to finish that job as we move over the next couple of months. So happy to report their promises were met, and they are using it for the spring semester, just like we had anticipated. At Conroe High School, this is our ninth-grade classroom addition to increase the overall capacity of Conroe High School ninth-grade campus. That building is nearing its dry condition, too. The roof is about 90% complete, the masonry is also about 90% complete, and we're changing our focus to the inside and the transitions between buildings, which is a lot of concrete ramps and sidewalk work to make that circulation around that campus happen. Like I said, on the inside, you're starting to see things come together, building systems, classroom petitions, walls, things of that nature. And we look to wrap that building up this summer for students to use when they return from the summer break in August of '22. And that's our update.
That's awesome. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Foster?
Looks fabulous.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item eight for purchasing, consider award of RFP 21-12-03 Chromebooks and Chromebook carts. Mr. Reeves.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. Tonight, we are requesting that the board considers awarding RFP number 21-12-03 for Chromebooks and Chromebook carts to CDWG LLC for an estimated expenditure of $5 million. Requests for proposals pertaining to the purchase of Chromebooks and Chromebook carts for the district were emailed to registered vendors through their electronic CICE e-bidding system. The proposal was advertised on the CICE purchasing website and also two times in the courier. These devices will be distributed to replace the devices that no longer update to the most current Google operating system version, as well as given to locations to assist with devices needed for testing. This is important as the state moves to online-only testing beginning in December of this year. And then these tests will require a certain operating system level to work, and our old ones here are out there, they're end-of-shelf live here. So with your approval, the district would purchase approximately 14,000 Chromebooks and 100 Chromebook carts over the next few months to replace those outdated units. The vendors were asked to offer firm unit prices for Chromebooks and Chromebook carts, as well as a shelf or catalog discount for additional similar items not listed in the line items. Pricing shall be firm for one year through January of next year, automatically renewing annually for two additional one-year terms through January of 2025. We had 21 vendors submit a response. Our proposal was evaluated by the Technology Department and reviewed by the Purchasing Department. Best value offers are recommended for award. Funds for these purchases are provided in the federal fund, and at this time, we request your approval.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
No move.
You have a motion? Need a second?
Second.
You have a second. All right, any discussion or questions?
I just, so every, every school district in the state of Texas, starting in December, is going to have to do all of their star testing online. So there's going to be a large group of users out there buying these. We anticipate that our vendors are going to be able to supply-
Correct. At this time, we're, the vendor has told us that we're not going to afford an eight-week lead time, which is considerably shorter than-
What's our lead time?
And then for us, we'll do it in phases, because obviously we don't have the capacity to bring in 14,000 at a time.
Correct, yeah.
So we'll do it over the next few months, and can get those in ready for-
So they're telling us eight weeks.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right, very good. Call the vote. All those in favor, show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed, by the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you.
Moving on to item nine, finance, consider, is this, yeah, consider approval of the 2020-2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Mr. Rice.
Yes, good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure to recommend that the board approve the 2020-2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. I would first like to recognize the finance staff that worked on the financial statements of the district. Ms. Karen Garza is here this evening with us, but also Janice Stowers, Cindy Westrop, Rachel Batell, and Mandy Vackweather watching on the YouTube. Sarah Roberts, partner with district independent auditors, Weaver, she is here this evening with the presentation of the financial statements and can answer any question that you may have. Sarah?
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having me here today. I had the opportunity to visit with your audit committee last week and gave a detailed presentation on the audit, as well as the financial statements. I'm going to keep my comments tonight more focused on the type of audit, the results of the audit, and some comments around our firm as a whole and our experience with the district. As Darren mentioned, I'd be happy to answer any questions specific to the financial statements or the audit or otherwise. So I will start out with a brief overview of the timeline for our audit. We've worked with the district for several years now and have kept our timeline consistent with our planning phase generally starting in May, and concluding with our, the issuance of our report in January, consistent with the Audit Committee meeting, the first Audit Committee meeting in January. Before getting into the details further, I would like to take a moment and just echo Darren's comments, express my appreciation and general acknowledgement of the level of collaboration that goes into the external financial audit between Weaver as a firm and the district's personnel. Darren Rice, Karen Garza are here tonight, but there are a number of additional individuals that we work with. Really appreciate the collaboration, the level of professionalism, the high-quality financial reporting that we consistently experience that really facilitates an effective audit process. So thank you very much for that. The type of audit we perform for Conroe Independent School District is what's known as a single audit. A single audit involves two components, and that is the audit of the financial statements and the audit of federal awards. The standards applicable to the financial statement audit are generally accepted auditing standards in the United States issued by the AICPA, also known as GAAS, and also generally accepted government auditing standards issued by the GAO. That's what's known as the Yellow Book Audit, if you've heard that term. We issue two reports as a result of our financial statement audit, and those reports are our report on the financial statements, where we express our opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with U.S. GAAP. Second is our government auditing standards report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance and other matters. In this report, we describe the scope of our testing and the results of that testing, as well as any reportable findings. The Yellow Book Audit requires us to consider compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements that would have a direct and material effect on the financial statements. So an example of such a law or regulation would be the Public Funds Investment Act, PFIA. As part of our audit, we consider compliance with PFIA, and would report any findings if we had any regarding compliance affecting the financial statements to you. The second component is our audit of federal awards. The single audit, the federal awards is, the audit of federal awards is conducted in accordance with the Uniform Guidance. Similar to the Yellow Book, involves consideration of contracts, grants, and other agreements. However, this is specific to federal award compliance. As far as our results, our report on the financial statements was unmodified, which is a clean opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide, that the financial statements are materially fairly presented in accordance with GAAP. In our report on internal control of our financial reporting and compliance, our Yellow Book report, we had no reportable findings, which means no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies in internal controls, and no material non-compliance. Our last report, which is our report on federal awards, we also issued an unmodified or clean opinion on federal award compliance with no reportable findings, so no material or significant controlled deficiencies. Our major programs this year were the Child Nutrition Cluster and two of the COVID-19 programs, ESAR and Coronavirus Relief Fund. Auditing those three major programs resulted in coverage of about 70% of total federal expenditures, which is an unusually high number. We were required for a low-risk district, such as Conroe ISD, to achieve 20% coverage. So we achieved a very high level of coverage, mostly because these COVID programs are new and are designated by the OMB as inherently higher risk, which kicks them into a major program category and results in higher coverage. That being said, your total federal expenditures of $82.5 million was significantly greater than what you would normally see in a normal non-COVID year, about $40 million greater than last year. So with that, one comment on that is that this money comes with the significant caveat that this is non-recurring funding. The ESAR programs, the CRF programs are non, will affect the district for '22 and '23, I believe, but are not expected to be recurring funding sources. With that non-recurring funding, you did experience an increase in general fund fund balance of about $17 million, which correlates to the amount of that federal money that was recognized in the general fund. The ratio of unassigned fund balance to expenditures did increase slightly as a result of that, but you're remaining in about that 30% position. One item I'd like to mention is that there was a new accounting standard affecting the title of the financial report. GASB 98 was issued. With that, the CAFR acronym is now ACFR. The reason for that is the CAFR, when pronounced out loud, sounds similar to a term of derogatory or offensive meaning in certain cultures, correlated, I believe, mostly associated with the apartheid era in South Africa and possibly some additional Arabic languages. And so the GASB and GFOWA recognized that, took immediate action, now we call it an ACFR. So if you've noticed that, that's the reason. Lastly, I would like to mention auditor independence. Weaver as a firm provides a number of services, offers a number of services, we have a number of departments. This year, we are working with your internal audit department on an ITGC audit, which is IT General Controls. From an external auditor perspective, this is classified as a non-audit service, and so we consider those very closely in terms of our auditor independence. So I have a few comments on that, I'd be happy to take any questions. This slide lays out some of these standards and requirements around auditor independence. I won't read them all to you, but basically, the requirements come down to an external auditor is not required to, I mean, is not permitted to have any involvement in management decisions or management functions, cannot set the strategic direction, cannot establish policies, cannot implement your systems, cannot provide ongoing monitoring activities, cannot set the scope or implement changes, cannot supervise your personnel, et cetera. So we avoid all of those activities. Some of the ways that we avoid those are the design of our audit programs, and also collaboration with your personnel to make sure that we understand our respective roles. Furthermore, we have some- Furthermore, we have some additional safeguards to independence, one being that our departments are segregated. With the external financial statement audit falling under the Assurance Department, the audit is led by myself, I'm a CPA. And the ITGC audit is led by Rema Peripilli. And I apologize, I'm scrolling through my notes. I, I had written down what the, the CISA and CDP SE designation stood for, and I've lost it. Part of my, oh, I got it, I'm sorry. I'm working with this technology, I'm trying to be with the times, and, and kind of fumbled myself. Certified Information Systems Auditor and Certified Data Privacy Solutions Engineer. So Rema's designations and certifications reflect the special areas of specialization and qualifications of her personnel that report to her and that are involved in the ITGC audit. Myself being a CPA, my focus is on accounting, financial reporting, and auditing, and that reflects the Assurance Department and the personnel that report to me. We don't have crossover between our engagements. I stay apprised of, of, of the ITGC audit. Any other services would provide for any mutual clients, and she does the same. The results of the internal audit, the ITGC audit, do not impact the external audit and vice versa. We don't rely on the work of the internal audit department at Conroe ISD. Doesn't impact our risk assessment or the results of our audit in any way. Lastly, we have an internal quality control function. We have a quality and risk management group that evaluates every engagement for acceptance. And so the ITGC involvement with internal audit was submitted for independent review, evaluated through our, our firm's system of internal quality control, and was approved for acceptance without conflicts of independence. Lastly, we do require a concurrent partner review on every audit engagement, every external financial statement audit engagement that's conducted in accordance with the Yellow Book to ensure that the judgments made and the conclusions reached are reasonable and there have been no breaches of independence. With that, thank you, thank you again. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Thoughts? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Roberts, for that. And also, just a, a quick thank you to Mr. Sanders and all of the Audit Committee members as well for working with, with everybody involved in this process as well. It's not easy, but we appreciate what y'all do, your diligence in that.
It's an action item, I guess we need to go ahead and approve it.
Yeah.
So I move we approve as presented.
Okay, you have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? Saying none?
I just, I just want to say, as I said in the Audit Committee, and I told Mr. Rice I was going to bring it up again, thank you to Mr. Rice and Ms. Garza and the entire accounting and finance team. If you go and look as a public and you want to know about a school district, go and look at the annual report and go back and read the notes in the back of that, and it will tell you everything you want to know about Conroe Independent School District and how we spend our money and what we do with it. And you will see that, as was presented earlier, the majority of it goes to instruction, and it goes for, for staff, and then we pay for fuel to, to bus kids around, and we pay the light bill, and that pretty much takes almost all of our money right there. But thank you for all you do, we appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Saying none, all those in favor, show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed, by the same sign. Very good, motion passes very much. Move to item 10, which is executive session. A co, a closed session of the board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice of the meeting as authorized by section 551.071, 551.074 of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Should the board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed or executive meeting or session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote shall be at either the public meeting upon the reconvening of the public, this public meeting upon the reconvening of the public meeting, or at a sequential public meeting of the board upon notice thereof, as the board shall determine. A closed session of the board will now be held, the time is 7:28.
All right, he is back in session. Time is eight twenty-two. Uh, move to, or we are on item thirteen adjourned?
So moved.
So moved. Second? We're good. We're done. Thank you.